Commission meeting for the 11th, or excuse me, the 5th of November 2011. My name is Rick Sturz and the time is 9:00 o'clock and we're going to start this right on time this morning. A couple of things. One, I know that this has been a fairly emotional week. You've read a lot of things in the newspaper and heard things and our goal today is, and by the way, we are not live streaming today, there is no Internet availability for this, so that the other commissioners will be able to watch today's or this morning's events recorded after the event. So they won't be able to be watching you today, but please feel free while you're giving your testimony to give comment to anybody else that would be watching. The course of the week, this week, has been a challenging one for the commission and it's been a very interesting and cathartic one for me as well. I know the community of Green Valley quite well. I've been coming here since I was, my parents started coming here when I was 12 years old and this was Fairfield, Green Valley. The Elks Club right behind us over here, my father and I helped design and build it. So I know this community, I know the community well. I've got a lot of passion for Green Valley and Sforita and just from this commissioner's point of view, I'll be working extremely diligently to put this back together. Just want to tell you that from right out of the gates.[97.54][97.54](APPLAUSE). It's also cathartic because I dropped off my nephew at my mother's house who lives over at Abrego Drive, just off of Abrego and Alpine Circle, because we're having to empty her house out today because she won't be coming home. So she's being moved into a center this next week and it's a day of transition. So from being here for 39 years, visiting Green Valley from when it was a small bedroom retirement community to the thriving community of Green Valley's Sforita-Tubac, that it's become a really dynamic place for people to live, to enjoy, and to experience. And I believe it's a joy for me to be here. Before we get started, I want to make some quick introductions to the folks that are here and before we start taking public testimony. To my left, I have Andrew Dressler representing Strategic Telemetry. To my right, I have our court reporter, her name is Michelle Elma, and she has been traveling around at various locations throughout the state. Behind the black box over there is Buck Forst. He is our chief technology officer. Buck is in control of making sure that the mics are running right and that the streaming and the video is controlled. At the back of the room, we have our deputy executive director Christina Gomez, and I want to make sure if anyone has a need for anything at all that you contact. Pardon me, I've got my Christmas bells on my phone. We also have Shane Shields and Karen Harmon, who are, or Herman, who are helping with us as well. They were the greeters that met you when you came in the door today. So before we get started with anything else, I want everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just love starting meetings out like that. There are some, a few ground rules that we have. Currently, we only have about 23 requests to speak. Christine, you might have a few more. I'm going to try to hold, depending on how everybody's temperament is, we can try to hold it to, we'll set a timer at, if everybody's okay with spending a couple hours together, if I've got 25 or 26 requests to speak, four minutes. I think everybody can get their thoughts in at that. Please, what I'll do is I'll call out three names in advance so the people that will be on deck and waiting up will be able to get their thoughts in order before they can come up and speak. Also, try to address, the goal out of this is to really get facts, to really get as factual information as possible about what your thoughts are, not only about what the commission has done so far, but what you would like to see happen. If it's down to the street level, give us that counsel. If you like what we're doing, tell us. If you don't like what we're doing, you can share that with us as well. So before we get started with anything else, we're going to go, I'm going to turn over to Andrew Dressler to give you sort of an overview of the redistricting process.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. As Commissioner Sturz mentioned, I'm just going to do a quick overview of the process and give you a little insight and show you what some of the, what we were working with before we show you the draft maps today. The Arizona redistricting process is governed by the state constitution as amended by voters in 2000 with the passage of Proposition 106. It stipulates that the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission shall redraw the Arizona's congressional and legislative districts to reflect the results of the most recent census. Due to the 2010 census, Arizona gained a congressional seat, so you're going to be, we're going to be going from eight congressional seats to nine congressional seats. The state senate will remain at 30 seats and nested within the state senate, we have two house members, so that will remain at 60. So we're moving up on the congressional side and remaining the same. What are the requirements of the state constitution per Proposition 106? New district boundaries must, A, comply with the U.S. Constitution and the Voting Rights Act; B, be equal population. Equal population for the congressional is down to one person, so the districts are all the same, and I think there's one district that has one additional person. And the, on the legislative side, it can be within 10%. I think we're under 5% on that, but that just gives you a sense of what equal population means for both congressional and legislative. Criteria A and B are federally mandated, so the other four are sort of unique to Arizona. To the extent practical, the districts must be, C, compact and contiguous, D, respect communities of interest, E, use visible geographic features, city, town, and county boundaries, and undivided census tracts, and F, favor competitive districts when no significant detriment to other goals. I just wanted to go over the Voting Rights Act. The Arizona congressional and legislative districts must receive preclearance or approval from the Department of Justice or a federal court under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act before they can take effect. To get preclearance, Arizona must demonstrate that the new districts do not discriminate against minority voters in purpose or effect, which means there can be no intentional or accidental discrimination. Under Section 5, Arizona's redistricting plans cannot be retrogressive. The plans cannot weaken or reduce the minority voter's rights. The presence of discrimination can be determined by analyzing population data and election results. We wanted to do a quick, give an overview from a former Department of Justice official. He has a short video for us.
Hello, my name is Bruce Adelson. I wanted to spend a few moments with you to talk a little bit about redistricting. I was a senior attorney for the United States Department of Justice in 2002 when the department and my team objected to or blocked your legislative redistricting plan. It's very important to understand that under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, which is a federal law, Arizona must obtain approval or preclearance from the Department of Justice or from a federal court in Washington, DC for your redistricting plan to go into effect. Under Section 5, under federal law, your redistricting plan cannot discriminate against the rights of minority voters. It cannot retrogress their opportunity to elect whom they want. This is a federal requirement. The federal requirement supersedes and takes precedence over all state requirements, whether they're competitiveness, compactness, contiguity, or keeping communities of interest together. Those are all very important, but if they conflict with the Voting Rights Act and conflict with the one-person-one-vote requirement of the U.S. Constitution, then they must be revised. The requirements of the Voting Rights Act and one-person-one vote are paramount. There cannot be any retrogression, discrimination against the rights of minority voters. If there is, the Department of Justice will not approve the redistricting plan. That's what we said when we wrote our letter in May 2002 and we objected to what the Redistricting Commission nine years ago had done. We found that the redistricting plan, the legislative plan, had discriminated against the rights of minority voters, and under federal law, that plan could not go into effect. So that as you contemplate redistricting and look at the various maps that have been provided by the commission, it's very important to understand that the federal requirements under our system of law and government take priority. Those requirements cannot be minimized and must be complied with for your redistricting plan to go into effect next year to enable you to have your legislative and congressional elections. I hope that my perspective as being a former federal law enforcement officer has been helpful, and I wish you continued success with your redistricting process. Thank you.
Next, we wanted to just do a quick overview of the timeline of the whole redistricting process and in simple terms, we'll just go break it down into six steps. Earlier this year, we set up the commission, the commission was set up, and the commissioners were appointed following a thorough screening process. And basically, what was needed to be done was create a state agency. Each of the commissioners serve in a voluntary unpaid role for the commission. The next step was this first round of hearings. Before drawing a single line, the commission met 23 times around the state in July and August to get input from members of the public about issues relevant to redistricting, such as geography, community of interests, minority voting rights, and competitiveness. The third step was the mapping. Per Proposition 106, we needed to start with a clean slate, so we couldn't take into consideration any of the old lines or where any of the incumbents lived. Then the next step was to create a grid, to create a grid map. So the state was divided into equal population and compact grid-like districts, and the grid map was approved on August 18. After August 18th and after adopting the grid map, the commission met more than 25 times to consider adjustments to the grid map to accommodate all state constitutional criteria. During this time, they received additional public comment and additional draft maps. Approval of the draft maps. On October 3rd, the commission approved the draft congressional map that incorporated changes based on all the constitutional criteria, and it approved the draft legislative map on October 18th, again, taking into consideration the state constitution and the criteria. We're currently in step four, and you're part of it today, is the second round of hearings. We're visiting 30 towns and cities around the state to gather additional comments and public opinion during the months of October and November. So that's what we're here today, is to hear what your thoughts are on the maps. Step five is the final maps. After the public comment period, the commission will adopt final maps. And then step six is preclearance. As we mentioned before, because Arizona is subject to Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, the district maps must be approved by the federal Department of Justice or a federal court in Washington, DC before they can be used for Arizona's elections. Before we show you the grid map, just want to step back a couple steps and show you where we were last time. The map that you see here up on the screen is the map, the congressional map that was approved last, by the last commission and was most recently used in the 2010 elections. Per Proposition 106, we started off with the clean slate, and then we proceeded to the grid maps. Again, the grid map only took into consideration two of the six criteria. It took into consideration equal population and compactness. So from there, the commission then met over 25 times in the end of August, in September, and October to come up with the draft map that you see here. Some highlights of the draft map, it has two predominantly rural districts, three border districts, has three districts in the greater Tucson region, five districts that are entirely within Maricopa County, avoids splitting Arizona's Indian reservations, and has two districts where minority voters have the opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. The legislative map followed a very similar process. Again, here's the map that was approved by the last commission and was most recently used in the 2010 elections. Then the next, the first step was per Proposition 106, we started with a clean slate, we didn't take into consideration previous lines on either the legislative or the congressional, and then we moved to the grid map. The grid map, again, takes into considerations, it takes consideration of equal population and compactness. Again, after the commission met, they approved the draft map that you see here. The draft map was approved on October 10th. Some highlights of the map, the old districts that you saw on the map that was just used in 2010, in the 2010 election, the population ranged from 155,000 to 378,000. Big reason that we do redistricting is because population shifts. We want to make sure that there's as one vote, the one person as equal as possible. Under the current map, it ranges between, the population ranges from 207,000 to 215,000. Again, we're allowed to go up to 10% per the constitution, and I think we're under 5% deviation on here. To comply with the Voting Rights Act, the draft map includes 10 districts, which minority voters have the opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. The draft map includes three districts wholly within Pima County and three additional districts in southern Arizona, 17 districts primarily within Maricopa County, and nine districts primarily rural. We want to hear what your input is. As Commissioner Sturz mentioned, you can fill out one of the yellow sheets and speak and give us your comments today, what you like, what you don't like about the maps. You can talk about any of the constitutional criteria, about the, you can comment on the congressional map, on the legislative map. And besides talking today, the other way to submit public input is at the back of the packets you receive, there's a blue sheet that was attached. You can either tear that off and fill that out and hand it in today if you don't feel comfortable speaking in front of everybody. At the bottom of the blue sheet, there's an address, you can mail that into the commission or on our website at www.aazredistricting.org, we have the opportunity where you can submit public comment that way. And there's also telephone numbers, both on the bottom of the sheet and on the website, that you can call into the commission office and give comments to us there. This is just a screenshot of our webpage, just wanted to highlight a couple things that we feel might be helpful for you. On the top left, you see a link to the maps. If you click on that, you will see a number of different variations of the maps throughout the process, the grid maps, the commissioners during that period between the grid maps and approval of the draft maps asked for a number of what-if maps, so all those are listed up there. And then, most importantly, the draft maps are located there. You have meeting information. One of the things that we've done is, it shows all the meetings from the beginning of the commission through today, and there is a, there's video of all the meetings, so if you wanted to watch how the draft maps came together, you can watch or read the transcripts of those meetings. I think there's over 100 hours of meetings and transcripts in there. So if anybody's bored tonight, you can start in on that. There's opportunity to give public comment, you can click on that and give us your feedback. And down at the bottom is another where, another place where you can find the draft maps. If you click on either of these, it'll take you to a page that looks like this. On this page is just a wealth of information. You got a lot of that information today in your packets. I think there's even additional information on here that you can go look at. First of all, you have the maps in a variety of different formats, and there's a number of different reports. The splits report, for example, compares the draft map versus the maps that were just used in the 2010 election. There's a compactness report, there's a competitiveness report, so there's just a lot of information on this page available for everybody. One feature that we have circled here and highlighted is the Google Maps. It's a feature that a lot of people really like because they say, where's my district? What are the district lines? So if you click on that, it'll take you to a page that looks like this. And one of the nice features about the Google Maps is you're really able to scroll in, zoom in, and see where the boundaries are, so you have a better understanding of where your district is and where the neighboring districts is. This is just an example of a shot, a screenshot in Maricopa County showing a couple congressional districts. And as you can see there, it has a lot of variety in terms of, it shows the boundaries, some geographic boundaries, and some natural boundaries as well. Finally, we want you to stay connected. We really want to hear what your thoughts are on this process. You can stay connected through our website, as I mentioned. You can watch current and past meetings. Also on the website is the opportunity to draw your own maps. We have an online mapping program there, and you can get updates on future meetings. As I mentioned, we're in step four, and this next step, and these are draft maps, and changes are going to be made, and you can watch and follow those changes. So just follow us on our website to see where future meetings are. And you can also follow us on Twitter and Facebook. I'm, this is the end of the presentation, but just wanted to say that I will be here afterwards if anybody has any specific questions or wants to see any of the features. By all means, please, please come up. Happy to answer any of your questions, and thank you again for coming out today. We're very excited and look forward to hearing your public comments.
Thank you, Andrew. Please.[1281.41][1281.41](APPLAUSE). Thank you, Andrew, for the presentation. It is, what I do when I hold these meetings is I take the, I take our yellow sheets in the order that they were delivered, except if we've got some members of the, of either legislature or some of our leadership. And today, we have both a state senator and a state representative that have joined us today, so I like to take them and put them at the top of the list at your indulgence. And one of the things that I'd also like to do is that when we give testimony, you know, it's sort of funny, I was, when I was talking about that my dad and I helped in building the Elks Club next door 28 years ago, I asked him when I was a kid, what, because he was a lifelong elk, and he said, I said, well, I asked him what BPOE stood for, and he said it stands for the best people on earth.[1336.26][1336.26](LAUGHTER). So I know I'm, I know I'm next door to some good surroundings here. So first off, I want to welcome State Senator Paula Aboud.[1345.61][1345.61](APPLAUSE). And Senator, before you begin, this is for everyone that will be speaking at the microphone. Right after Senator Aboud, it'll be Representative Daniel Patterson, followed by Ronald Sills. And please spell your name for our court reporter.
I'm State Senator Paula Aboud, A-B-O-U-D, from District 28 in Tucson, and I want to thank the commissioners, all the commissioners, all five of the commissioners for the service they do for our state of Arizona.[1378.01][1378.01](APPLAUSE). And I especially want to thank you folks for involving yourself in the political process. I'm here today for a couple of reasons. I have not attended the redistricting meetings. I'm term limited out, and I have no intention of running again, so, but why I came today was primarily to talk about Commissioner Colleen Mathis and the commission. You know, the one hearing that I attended in Tucson, I heard a representative that had been in office about two months stand up and say, we've got to take this process away from the people and give it back to the legislature. And so I came today to explain to you, after my six years in the legislature, what my experience has been there with things like breaking the rules and breach of ethics and breach of integrity, to at least give you a sense of why this process is with the people and why I support it, and why I would put my hands, if I had the choice between my life in the hands of the legislature and my life in the hands of the people, I would give it to you, the people.[1448.83][1448.83](APPLAUSE). And I'm not speaking in a derogatory manner about my colleagues, whom I do love, truly, and get along very well with, except when it comes to the rules and the rules that, and this is a ruling party in Arizona that has controlled the legislature for 48 years. And so the rules have less meaning to people when there is less competition, which is why I totally endorse more competitive districts in Arizona. The more legislative, competitive districts, the more your representation matters, the more your votes matter. In my district, I think the commission listened to what I said and asked, I asked for my district to be more competitive because the majority, the majority are Democrats, and the Republicans have no voice in my district, literally. I mean, I listen to everybody, I talk to everybody, but when it comes to elections, they don't come out because there's so many more Democrats, and that defeats this interactive process. But the legislature, you know, I, I come, my family's been in Arizona over 100 years. I thought everything was by the rules, and when I get to the legislature and I see that regularly the rules are suspended because the ruling party has enough people to suspend the rules to vote, and then when I ask to have the same rule suspended for me, it's completely rejected, and I'm, you know, I'm naive, okay, I was. And I was shocked that it, that's rejected for me because I'm with a minority party. Well, one year, the end of 2008, the last day of session, they wanted a bill to be passed very desperately because it was going to go on the ballot and help the election for their candidates. Well, I filibustered that bill on the last day of 2008, the last day of session. And a filibuster means that no one can take the floor away from me. Those are the Senate rules. And when they realized that they caught themselves in the rules after 30 minutes, after they'd huddled in the back of the room, they came back and they talked to the guy that's running the floor, and he shut my microphone off. Oh yeah, we took them to an ethics hearing, but there are three Republicans and two Democrats, and you know how that ended. Ladies and gentlemen, when one party rules so much that they can control the rules and the laws of the Senate, they can challenge the Constitution, they can do whatever they like. And so I say to you, this is the commission that needs to determine the boundaries of our districts and not the legislature. Thank you very much.[1633.01][1633.01](APPLAUSE).
And Representative Patterson, before you start, as this goes on, we'll win the applause, there might come a time where I might say that we might ask to hold the applause because it's very difficult for the court reporter to be able to comprehensively hear. So other than that, enthusiasm all you want. So Representative Daniel Patterson.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Sturz, and I'll just try to imagine some applause or something, something.[1670.58][1670.58](LAUGHTER). Good morning, everyone. It's a beautiful morning in southern Arizona. We are lucky to live here. I think our quality of life is very important to all of us, and that's why a lot of us are here. Politics affect our quality of life. I'm Representative Daniel Patterson from the Arizona House of Representatives. I currently represent District 29 in Tucson, Tucson's downtown south side, southeast Davis-Monthan Air Force Base, kind of the southern half of Tucson. And I want to agree with a lot of what was said by my colleague and friend, Senator Paula Aboud. I think the voters were very wise in Arizona to set up this commission to remove politics from the redistricting process. It is one area where Arizona really is a leader nationally in trying to make sure that we have fair and competitive elections, and that's something that certainly we all should support as Americans and Arizonans. It's just the best for our democracy. That said, I also can't step up here without mentioning my extreme, extremely strong concerns about what happened at the state Capitol this week and what I view as an attack on this commission and its independence that is going to play out in the courts. But I want to thank the commission for continuing your work during this process. I think it would be a big mistake to just shut down. There is nothing that prevents the commission from continuing to consider maps, continuing to consider what are going to be the most fair legislative and congressional districts. So I encourage the commission to keep doing your work. I support competition, competitive districts. I think that's the American way. We get better service generally when there's competition. That's true for sure in business. It's also true, I think, in politics. If politicians don't have to consider you as a part of their constituent base, then you lose. And we have, I think, a system where too many incumbents are sitting there ignoring large parts of their constituency because of the way the district parts of their constituency because of the way the districts are set up. And all they care about is primaries. That tends to lead to more extreme politics. And it's time to set aside these partisan differences and really just focus on giving people the best service they can get at the state Capitol. Competition does that. Specific to Legislative District Two, the draft Legislative District Two, would I want to address some specifics on that because that, a big part of my District 29 would be included in District Two. And the draft District Two also includes not Green Valley proper, but all around Green Valley and Sawrita nearby. So it is certainly relevant to this meeting here in Peepah County. One concern I do have about Legislative District Two, and I've been hearing this from some other people, is potential problems with packing of Hispanic voters. Right now, it's at over 61 percent. That's very high. And it could go as high as 66 percent or two-thirds within a few years. The reason that's a problem, certainly the commission has to deal with the Voting Rights Act. That's federal law. That's something we have to follow. And it's important to respect voting power of Latinos. But packing too many people into a district reduces competition in other districts. And I think there could, that could be a problem with LD Two. I know this has been mentioned before. I'd like to see the commission go for that 54 percent Hispanic voting age number in LD Two. I think that keeps LD Two strong, but it also helps competition in other districts. And it does not disempower, to some extent, the Hispanic vote. One way to do that, and this continues to come up, is the funny kind of dog leg that goes across Cochise County in District Two. I know there's been people wondering, you know, what's this all about? It kind of looks gerrymandered. We're not really sure what that's about. I love Cochise County. I love the people in Cochise County. A lot of my friends live there. But that might be one way to address the balance in that district and maybe add some more voters on the east side of Tucson or somewhere else. The only other thing, and then I'll wrap up my comments, is that in LD Two, I really believe Precinct 45 should be added in the downtown area of Tucson. We've had a lot of issues at the Capitol involving downtown Tucson, central Tucson. Precinct 45, which is basically the Armory Park neighborhood and the neighborhoods immediately south of downtown, are very connected to the other neighborhoods to the south of there. So I think with a community of interest issue, it would make a lot of sense to make sure Precinct 45 would be included downtown. And that just takes the boundary up to Broadway and Congress in downtown Tucson, which is basically where it is now for, for District 29. Thank you very much. Again, I encourage the commission to maintain its independence. Please don't allow yourself to be bullied and continue your work. It's important that this get done as soon as possible for the public interest of all of us here and our entire state and our country. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Patterson. He reminded me of something about, about federal law. Federal law requires us to have a translator at these events, and our translator was not, was not able to make it this morning. So if there is a need for translation subsequent to this, we would have the tape and video able to be translated for that. If there is a need for that, please see Christina Gomez, and we'll make special accommodations after the fact. And I do truly apologize for that. Okay, next up, we're going to go for Ronald Sills, Jean Vickers, and Betty Johnson.
I'm Ronald Sills, S-I-L-L-S. I'm just a regular guy. I live in Green Valley, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Green Valley. And I don't have to convince Commissioner Sturtz since he's already on our side, but I will speak to the invisible commissioners not here. I got some concerns with the present map as it's drawn because I feel it effectively disenfranchises our community. I don't feel it's a partisan issue either. I feel that people of both parties feel the same way. If you look over there, there's a mountain range which pretty effectively cuts us off from the rest of Cochise County. The nearest community in Cochise County in that district is an hour's drive away. The representation of this community is fairly equal between Republicans and Democrats, so that makes it a nonpartisan issue. We're not going to tilt the scales one way or the other. But we won't get effective representation in this district if a representative comes from a place, you know, way over on the other side of the mountains. And there's no need for any candidate from that area to come here to recruit us since we're somewhat evenly divided anyway, and it's such a long inconvenient drive for them. Our community of interest is not Sierra Vista. It's not Douglas. It's not Bisbee. It's not Safford. It is Sawrita, and it is Tucson. We are inextricably connected by our umbilical cord, I-19, to those communities. We shop in those communities. We educate in those communities. We get our health care in those communities. We get our social services from those communities. We get our entertainment from those communities. This corridor needs to be whole. I'd like to see us restored. And I don't just come to throw rocks. I come with solutions. My sources tell me that there's a goodly number of folks down in Douglas who are not happy with being in the district we're supposed to be in. And I know that no one knows for sure the true population of Green Valley. But I'm going to guess it's not too different from the population of Douglas. A simple swap of Douglas and Green Valley in the legislative districts, I think, would satisfy both needs. And I want to add at the end that I share the concern that's already been stated. I'm just absolutely appalled and just struck with awe at the audacity of what happened last week in the Capitol. I can't believe that the will of the people is being so circumvented by the removal of Commissioner Mathis, and I hope that that gets restored. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we've got Jean Vickers, followed by Betty Johnson, followed by Miriam Lindmeier.
First, I would like to say that I'm, I'm very pleased with the federal congressional map that you've drawn up. I think that does accurately represent what it should. And I would like to thank you and the other commissioners for your hard work on this commission. Your volunteer dedication, as recent events have shown, can set you up for a thankless task. Coming to Arizona from the northeast, where politics are hashed out and sometimes endless town meetings, I had hoped that the law the voters passed to take politics out of redistricting, you would be allowed to draw up truly independent competitive districts. The abrupt interference of the governor seems to this voter to be uncalled for political pressure. I hope you are allowed to continue the commission work free of pressure to gerrymander. We moved to Arizona in 2007. We chose to live in Corona Day Tucson, a village of Vale. It's actually an unincorporated village of an unincorporated town. We're on the south side of Tucson. Took me 20 minutes to get here today without too much violation of the speed limit. We chose it because of its close proximity to my husband's job at Raytheon. I work from home as a recruiter. We do all of our shopping in Sawrita, Tucson, or Green Valley. We have several neighbors who work at Raytheon in Tucson as well. Other neighbors work in Tucson or Green Valley. Your map has linked us to communities east and south of us that we have nothing in common with. I've been to Sierra Vista once for a job fair at, at Fort Huachuca. Wouldn't even know how to get to Safford. Residents of Vale who live north of I-10 likely have many more ties to Tucson as well. Our issues are about commuting and transportation times to Tucson. We go to Tucson for theater, concerts, and museums. We travel equally, I-19 north and I-10 west. Our community is near the intersection of Houghton, or Houghton, as I've been told, it's really pronounced, and Sawrita Road. I would like to see Green Valley, Vale, and Sawrita in a state legislative district connected to Tucson as communities of interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, it's, she has my name spelled.
Spelling, very good. Next up is Betty Johnson, followed by Miriam Lindmeier and Tom Lindmeier.
I'd like to thank Betty Johnson, B-E-T-T-Y-J-O-H-N-S-O-N. I would like to thank all of the commissioners for your volunteer hours. And I'm truly sorry that the independent chair of this independent commission cannot be here today because Governor Brewer and the Republican Senate have chosen to remove her. In taking this politically motivated action, they have attacked the process voted on by Arizona voters in 2000. I do support the process through which you are going and all the volunteer hours that you have given. The work that you have done so far with the community groups like Tribal Nations and the Hispanic Coalition for Good Government should not be thrown out. Do not start from scratch. I'm going to address the issue of competitiveness and the legislative district into which my community, Green Valley, Green Valley has been placed, District One. I will also touch on communities of interest because I believe the two issues are closely connected. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about the groups in Map One. Green Valley is a community of 22,000 people, people that live in neighborhoods that are on small lots. We are like a small unincorporated town, like a suburb of Tucson with the adjoining community of Sawrita. Green Valley's 550 elementary schools go to Sawrita, go to Sawrita for high school. We share an aquifer. We share shopping, churches with Sawrita. We are not a rural community. Tucson is where we derive so much of our cultural and sporting pleasures and our educational opportunities. We have been carved out of our adjoining Santa Cruz Valley communities like Sawrita, out of the area that surrounds us on Legislative District Map Two that runs from Nogales South to part of Tucson in the north. It is as if Highway 19 that runs through the area is closed or doesn't exist, and people would have to helicopter over it. Green Valley, along with Sawrita, belong together in Legislative District Map Two. The community into which we have been placed, District Map One, is not only one, but two mountain ranges away and extends to the border with New Mexico. It's a very rural area with the exception of Sawrita, of Sierra Vista, with 43,000 people, some 70 miles away, and many smaller communities with less than 15,000 people. These communities provide services to the very many ranches in that vastly rural area. Some of the towns that we might tour for a day when out-of-town guests visit or pass through, we only visit for a day as we pass through the rural areas on Route 10, traveling to New Mexico. We have nothing in common with this proposed legislative Map One. I would like to further discuss why I believe Green Valley being placed in Map One is of concern to me. The lack of competitiveness. Current voter registration in Map One consists of Republicans, 42.2 percent, Democrats, 26.2 percent, and others, 31.6 percent. What Democrat would choose to run with those numbers stacked against her or him? I believe it is more likely that a Republican east of the Santa Rita Mountains or the Wetstones, Wetstones would become the representative for this huge area, and the Democrats would be basically disenfranchised. The same would be true for Republicans in an area with an extremely high number of registered Democrats. It would be likely that a Democrat would be elected and the Republicans would feel disenfranchised. It makes sense to me to place Bisbee and Douglas with a similar population of Green Valley in Map One, the rural area, and to swap that with Green Valley, a more suburban-like community, be placed in Map Two. Also think it would be very challenging for a representative who lives in the Wetstones to meet with her or his constituents in Green Valley to learn of their concerns. If people feel their issues are not understood and represented, they come to believe that their vote does not count, and they stop voting. This is not what Arizona voters had in mind in 2000 when they passed the constitutional amendment that would create, among other things, fair and competitive districts and place redistricting in the hands of an independent commission rather than the current office holders. Competition is good for democracy. It is very important to have all our views presented and listened to in the legislature before passing laws that affect us. It is not healthy for our state, which is roughly divided politically, one-third independents, one-third Republicans, and one-third Democrats, to only have one group, now Republicans, being heard and passing laws. For decades, current office holders, Republicans in this case, controlled how the voting districts were created. Change that. Please create the opportunity for a healthy Arizona democracy, one where legislators debate issues, listen to each other, negotiate, and pass laws that make us feel that we are being heard. I imagine all of us want to be heard, not only here, but regularly through our representatives in the State House. Please consider competitiveness a critical issue for our state as you finalize the maps. Thank you. I would like, I would just like to add one comment, and that is I do support the congressional map as it is. Please move forward on that.
I'm Miriam Lindmeier, L-I-N-D-M-E-I-E-R. First, I want to thank you for your work and confirm that I support the current constitutional redistricting process. And also, as you've heard from most of the others who have spoken here, express my outrage and shock at the political involvement into this process. The voters of this state want an independent commission who speaks for the people and tries to come up with an independent, as competitive as possible state where we all have a voice. And I'm hoping that the courts are going to support a challenge and that we will have the independent commissioner back and that you all will truly represent the best interests of the people of this state and keep it out of politics. My, I do support the congressional map. I probably would like to see some changes, but I, I understand how difficult the job is, and I think that you've done well with the congressional map. Substantively, I'm here to urge that you reconsider your, the legislative district map that separates Green Valley and Sawrita. I live in Quail Creek. I have a Green Valley address. The post office from Green Valley serves me. My taxes for schools support the Continental School District, which is also supported by Green Valley. But I pay local taxes to Sawrita. I vote in Sawrita. I get my permits and pay fees in Sawrita. And the Sawrita local government is the one that sets the rules for me. So I consider myself quite a mix of both Green Valley and Sawrita in Quail Creek. I buy groceries at Fry's in Sawrita, but I also go to Safeway in Green Valley. My husband likes the church in Green Valley that we go to. I like one in Sawrita. We go to mine, too. So we, we consider ourselves mixed. I never know whether I'm in Green Valley or Sawrita. The two combine for me. So I'm really urging a community of interest for these two communities. I'm a member of both of them, as far as I'm concerned. Next, I would like to also urge that you move Green Valley into Legislative District Two because we are part of the I-19 corridor. Sawrita's in that. I'm happy with my selection there, but I think Green Valley ought to be in there as well. I, I work part-time in Tucson. I am someone who tutors in the Tucson public school system, and I also have done some work for state vocational rehab in Tucson. And I travel to Tucson three times a week for my part-time tutoring. We have general doctors here in the local area, but our specialists are in Tucson. And we enjoy the cultural environment that Tucson has. We love where we live here, but I'm not sure we'd be here if we weren't so close to Tucson. It, to me, is one big community, and I-19 has served as a very easy commute route for us to enjoy the benefits of a smaller community, but also the culture of a larger community. I feel like I have nothing in common with places like Douglas, however, that have been put in LD Two. put in LD Two and if we're going to swap Green Valley in, it seems like maybe looking at that area to swap out might be a smart thing. Thank you for your work. As a citizen of the state, I'm sorry that you've had to work under the difficult situation you've had to work under with some of the political pressure that's been exhibited here. I beg you to hang tough and do your job. We, the people of this state, are depending on you to be independent and look out for us. Thank you.
Lindmeier, followed by Doris and Irene McMillan.
It's Tom Lindmeier, L-I-N-D-M-E-I-E-R. I'm the other half of the traveling show here that you just heard. In kind of the, you had Mr. Sills up here talk about that there should possibly be a trade between Green Valley and Douglas and I'm pretty much, that there should be a, an inclusion of Green Valley within Legislative District Two and have, and if you needed to have an equalization of public, of population, that perhaps Douglas should be in Legislative District One. And I want to kind of echo that for, for one reason. I, I think that the, that the economic trade that comes through Nogales and actually proceeds up through Tucson is actually just that straight north-south shot. There isn't much of a, of a, of an area that, that goes east of Nogales that's actually included within that trade. I think the people that actually are in Green Valley have a lot more commonality between them and Sarita than they do in, of communities and places like Sierra Vista, Benson, Douglas. Douglas really is a separate port of entry from Mexico and I think that the trade that comes through that actually goes north of there. You know, I teach in Tucson and I do some work in Nogales and I think that's pretty much, that corridor is really kind of the, the way in which economic trade proceeds from Mexico up through Tucson, not only for me, but I think for a lot of other people. So I would hope that you would, you would include Green Valley in Legislative District Two and, and if need be to equalize, that you would take populations from Douglas to equalize that out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we've got Doris Gergenoff, followed by Irene McMillan and Joanne Amoroso.
Oops. Thank you. I appreciate the difficult task that this commission is faced with and I'd like to thank the committee for their efforts.
Ma'am, try to speak into the microphone. There you go. They grow.
I wanted to thank the, the commission for all of their hard work trying to come up with an equitable redistricting plan for both congressional and legislative districts. I'm most concerned with the Legislative District map at present. Green Valley shares with Sarita Chamber of Commerce, Food Bank, concerns about water, mining, air pollution, safety, schools, just to mention a few things. And we both use I-19 to go to Tucson and enjoy cultural events, shopping, and meetings. The common concerns can best be addressed by elected officials who represent our combined communities. We are geographically connected and are contiguous. The communities to the east of us, with which we would now be grouped in the new District One, are more rural and have different concerns and the people elected from that District One would correctly address the concerns of that majority, leaving us without meaningful representation. So I'm just asking you to please keep us in District Two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Irene McMillan, followed by Joanne Amoroso and Charles Bowker.
Irene McMillan, I-R-E-N-E-M-C-M-I-L-L-A-N. I am a Scottish-American. I am the ultimate voting minority and coming to Arizona, I find so much animosity between the political parties. And we have recently, in Green Valley, got live broadcasts from the Met and I want you to know that I gave that up today to come here. And I, I would like to see competitiveness for my Republican friends and my Democratic friends. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Joanne Amoroso, followed by Charles Bowker and Danielle Rushford.
Joanne Amoroso, A-M-O-R-O-S-O. Chairman Sturz and commissioners, I wish to speak tonight, today about the, my feelings after attending the meeting October 3rd in Tucson and also some concerns that I have regarding the current legislative redistricting map. The meeting in Tu, I attended the meeting in Tucson and I was impressed. I came away believing the committee members were diligent, well-informed, fair in their deliberations, concerned, forthright, and earnestly working to achieve district lines in accord to the guidelines. Before the meeting began, a member of the mapping committee announced that a misalignment of some statistics was noted. It would have to be corrected before the meeting could begin. I interpreted that as a sign of diligence, honesty, and a commitment to complete the task at the hand correctly. It also took a good deal of humility and courage, I believe, to admit a mistake. As the meeting progressed, I was impressed with the meticulous detail of information given in the report, the conscientiousness and consensus required among the members to come to an agreement on forming the districts in according to the guidelines, and the well-thought-out reasoning when the lines needed adjustment to meet community, geographical, population, and traffic patterns. Several times, committee members spoke for fairness regarding the expressed requests of specific communities, such as age-restricted communities, American Indian communities, or minority neighborhoods. I was shocked to hear of Governor Brewer's complaints and has yet have heard specifically what her accusations are. I'm sorry your work has been disrupted and maligned. I have concerns that the current legislative district has scooped Green Valley out of its long-established corridor north to south along I-19. I feel this is important and it, important for us to be aligned with our neighbors who share the waning aquifer west of Santa Cruz Mountains and the intense illegal cross-border activities in the same area. I think both these issues are pending and we need to have unified representation in the legislature in the future to deal with these. Often when I'm being introduced and we get exchanging addresses, the question I hear is, is that in Green Valley or Sarita? It's true, we live in each other's neighborhoods. Daily, we learn of community concerns as we share our churches, medical and dental offices, stores, service providers, fire department, use of the landfill, parks, community agencies, clinics, and library, home extension office and garden, the performing arts center. We, as an unincorporated community and a senior citizen community, we rely and are grateful for our Sarita's service providers. Services not available in Green Valley or to attend social functions or use the airport, we go to Tucson at least twice a week. This is our community of interest. Point C's are separated geographically and culturally from Green Valley by mountain ranges of Box Canyon and miles of agricultural land and ranch-oriented communities. They are tourist destinations for me, our taste of the West, which we travel to with our visitors, not daily interactions that we share now with Sarita and Tucson. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, we've got Charles Bowker, Danielle Rushford, and Glenn Lundell.
My name is Charles Bowker, last name B-O-W-K-E-R, and I, I appreciate the opportunity to put my two cents worth in. I guess I empathize with the difficulty of the commission and its work redistricting the map of Arizona. I had a little bit of experience with that in working in a, in a community, reorganizing a map just for community improvement. And so I, I certainly, I, I guess one of the questions I have is, is how is the commission functioning now? Is, is there a interim chairperson or is the independent chairwoman still functioning? I, I guess I just am curious how you're continuing to function and I appreciate you being here, attempting to continue your work. I just want to reiterate briefly what's been said before and, and that is the, probably the unprecedented action of the governor and the leadership of the legislature recently seems to me quite contrary to the intent of Proposition 106 and disrespectful of the voters of Arizona. And I feel that if there is any charge of misconduct being directed, it should be directed at the meddlers and not the hard-working commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, somebody wants to ask me a question. They said, they said, Ken, I'll give you a penny for your thoughts, so I threw my two cents in. Then they asked me, what happened to the other penny? Tom, sorry about that. Next up is Danielle Rushford, followed by Glenn Lundell and Sandra Rooney.
Good morning, Danielle Rushford, D-A-N-I-E-L-L-E, Rushford, R-U-S-H-F-O-R-D. First, I want to thank the commission for their continued hard work and dedication to this process. Any person who volunteers for this job is definitely a hero in my book. This has been a tough process. I want it stated that I am very upset with Governor Brewer and her partisan tactics in attacking the independent commission. I did participate in the Nogales meeting. I testified and what Governor Brewer did by removing Colleen Mathis was show me that my opinion didn't matter. I live in Sarita, but I'm married and I have three kids and two of my kids attend school in Sarita. I have one child that attends school in Green Valley. I work in Green Valley. My husband works in Sarita. We're very interlaced, these two communities. My mailing address is Green Valley, but I actually live in Sarita, so I have to use the Green Valley post office. I grocery shop at Safeway. There's one in Sarita. There's one in Green Valley. I go throughout both communities all day long. I'm basically circling around Sarita and Green Valley all day long with kids, touting them to their after-school things, their preschools, their baseball games, everything. These communities are very interlaced together. We also share an aquifer and we also share the I-19 corridor with Tucson. So I am requesting that Green Valley move into my legislative district, too. I want to say that the congressional districts, I'm, I'm fine with. I'm fine with those. I would tweak them a little bit, but I'm okay with those, so I'd like those to remain the same. And just to state, we are a community of interest. We are one community with many same interests. With the reasons stated above, I think it's very important that these communities are able to vote united for one representative who represents all of us as a whole, the policies that they would put into place affect us together as one community. Additionally, I strongly believe in competitive districts. All candidates from all different parties should have the opportunity to run a competitive campaign in their district. This would encourage all interested parties to run for office and therefore the opportunity for each American citizen to be represented in their community. And again, I want to thank all the commissioners, Commissioner Sturz and the ones that are not here, for your hours that you have dedicated to this commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we've got Glenn Lundell, Sandra Rooney, and Ann Sprague. And by the way, again, as a reminder, if you do have written comments that you'd like to put in, into the record as well, above and beyond your testimony, make sure that you can leave them with any of the staff. Mr. Lundell.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Yes, my name is Glenn Lundell. It's L-U-N-D-E-L-L, Glenn with two N's. I live here in Green Valley with my wife. Been here for over 15 years. I'm commenting today on, on behalf of myself and also, I am an affiliate of Citizens for Common Sense Redistricting and I have listened to some of the testimony before at other meetings. One point I believe is important, I don't think the commission has applied on a consistent basis the criteria for the redistricting process, especially with regard to communities of interest. I was at meetings where I heard commissioners specifically addressing communities of interest when they were talking about the Phoenix area, Maricopa County, and with regard to the river area along the western side of the state. But in considering Southern Arizona, more specifically Pima, Cochise, and Santa Cruz counties, the current graph map appears to disregard that factor without any real rationale given. For example, it's been much concrete presentation even today regarding Sarita, Green Valley, greater Green Valley areas as being a community of interest, which I firmly believe in. After all, as we've said, the shopping, education, cultural, social services, business, the joint chambers of commerce, law enforcement, fire, safety, even media, this radio station and newspapers, all this ties the communities together very, very nicely. I have one difference of opinion from some of the things I've heard said today regarding Tucson and Nogales because I didn't move here because of Tucson. I looked for a community that, to me, was like Green Valley with the, with the recreation facilities that are here, that you're sitting in the midst of one of their social businesses today. I also have been a great supporter of the Sarita Junior LTC people, for example, and the others like that. I've tried to involve myself in both communities. One thing I like about it is my gas bill is way down for driving my car because I don't go to Tucson or Nogales very often and a lot of the people here in Green Valley don't either. And I, I recognize those who work in the area and things like that, but there's a lot of us that don't and we sort of like the community-type thing we're in. I think that that deal of community interest, in some ways, and I'm not sure how it now relates, applies to the whole area of Vale, Corona del Tucson, Tonka Verde, and so forth because to me, my community of interest lies with what I'll call the rural or far-out suburban thing as opposed to within the communities themselves. So I certainly believe we belong in Legislative District One because it more fits that type of interest as far as I'm concerned. And your, so in your final deliberations, I hope that you, and I'm looking at the legislative districts, congressional maps and all, that you give continued interest in community of interest because I think it's well-important factor that's involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lundell. Next up, we've got Sandra Rooney, followed by Ann Sprague and Martin. Thank you.
My name is Sandra Rooney, R-O-O-N-E-Y, like Andy who died overnight, but no relation. First, I want to say that I'm disappointed and dismayed at the action of Governor Brewer and the Arizona Senate in removing Chairwoman Colleen Mathis from the commission. Second, I want to sincerely thank all the members of the commission for what I'm sure has been and continues to be a very demanding and seemingly thankless task of determining how Arizona best does the necessary redistricting process. I'm sure trying to meet all the criteria seems an impossible task. As you review the work you've done to date, I want to underscore the importance of competitive districts to promoting the greatest constituent participation in the political process. But as you know, that alone is not enough. For communities to work together to identify how their particular needs are best met, geographical proximity is vital, as is community of interest. I want to speak to both of these. Speaking as a resident of Green Valley, I hope the commission will take another look at the district where we are placed. I speak specifically to the importance of keeping Green Valley and Sarita to I speak specifically to the importance of keeping Green Valley and Sarita together. The two communities border one another. Our school districts overlap, as do fire districts and water services. We have a joint chamber of commerce. We in Green Valley shop in Sarita and Tucson. We find our entertainment opportunities in Tucson. Our library is part of the Pima County library system. Many of us go regularly to Tucson for medical care. Our community of interest is clearly the I-19 corridor. Although Green Valley is unincorporated, it is in no way rural, and to put us in a rural district disenfranchises many of our interests. We are separated from Sierra Vista by a mountain range, and perhaps the only thing we have in common is that a few of us may hike in the same mountains. Without knowing the commission's reason for separating us from our community of interest, a look at the current draft of the redistricting map would appear to be a mistake. Many of us feel it is. Please reconsider and keep Sarita and Green Valley together and in District Two. To not do so would severely diminish our political voice and discourage active participation in the political process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've got, next up is Ann Sprague, followed by Martin Kahn and Susan Bickel. Is Ann here? Okay, we're going to go to Martin Kahn, followed by Susan Bickel and Robert Soto.
Yeah, my name is Martin Kahn, K-A-H-N. Try, if you can, to imagine a Congress and a state legislature that actually cares about everybody, that wants to get something done, that had four hundred and thirty-five Gabby Giffords in Congress. And that's really the reason why I ask you, please, to use competitiveness as one of the most important criteria. Our problems, a country today, is not that we can't get anything done, we won't get anything done. And we won't because of the hyper-partisanship in the legislature and in Congress. And the reason for that is that there aren't enough competitive districts. If there are competitive districts, then they have to listen to all of us. If there aren't, then the Republican legislator doesn't care about the Democrats and vice versa. And so what happens is, the most extreme, the most active, go out to the primaries and determine who we get as legislators and congresspeople. And we're in a very sad state because of that. So I know that there are two Democratic commissioners and two Republican commissioners, and there used to be, and hopefully will be, one independent commissioner, but please, when you're doing this for the final thing, don't think of yourself as Democrats, don't think of yourself as Republicans, think of yourself as Arizonans and Americans. And let's not let this commission bow to political pressure. Let's try to remember that if we have competitive districts all across Arizona, all across this country, we will move forward together. We can't go on the way we're going on. This is just lunacy. And when we see a legislature that spends as much time picking a state gun as trying to get jobs or do the other things that need to be done, we see where we are now. And the only way that's going to change is by changing the election process, by getting more people who are moderates who listen to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Susan Bickel, followed by Robert Soto and Donald Crete.
Good morning. My name is Susan Bickel. Okay, is this better?
Perfect.
Thanks. Good morning. My name is Susan Bickel. That is B as in boy, I-C-K-E-L. I am a resident of Douglas, and I want to tell you all that I love Green Valley, but I don't want to have a representative from Green Valley. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the meeting in Sierra Vista a couple of weeks ago, so I appreciate the opportunity of you folks coming here and allowing me to speak. Commissioner Sturts, this is directed to you, because I watched the livestream of that particular meeting, and at the very end, you commented on the fact that you had been to Douglas many times, and that your brother worked for the newspaper there, and that he actually broke the story of the Hannigan Brothers. Well, as a fourth-generation Arizonan from Cochise County and Douglas, I know that story very well, and it was a very sad story. I don't know if any of you folks know about that story. Unfortunately, the Hannigan Brothers made some very poor choices, and it landed them in a lot of legal trouble. The Hannigans had choices to make that day. They're citizens of this country, and they had the right to choose their courses of action. But while their actions dismayed and appalled me, their freedom to choose was guaranteed by our democracy. In 2000, the voters in Arizona made a choice. They overwhelmingly decided to take redistricting out of the hands of the legislature. As a result of this vote, you folks, the commissioners, now have the opportunity to give back to your state as volunteers serving on this commission. I applaud you for your dedication and for your generosity in this overwhelmingly difficult task. Unfortunately, there are some in this state who do not value your efforts. I am speaking about our governor, Jan Brewer. Governor Brewer had several choices to make last week. She chose to leave Arizona to promote herself in her book. Apparently, she left the dirty work to her underlings and the majority party, those in control, who somehow seemed content to follow rather than lead. She also had the choice to say no to a number of state and undoubtedly federal legislators who continued to pressure her to disrupt and disenfranchise a voter-mandated independent commission for her own party's benefit. Dismaying and appalling, she, in effect, negated all of your efforts and the efforts of those of us who chose to participate in this process in the past few months. Based on what I've read and heard on national media, her poor choice dismayed and appalled the citizens of this state and others in this country who continue to watch the drama that she has perpetuated over the past year. Governor Brewer has taken it upon herself to be the judge, jury, and executioner. This is a choice typical of a banana republic. It is surely not the choice of moral people who value life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We all have choices. How we make these choices depends upon the values we hold dear. I believe that all Arizonans have the right to fair and balanced districts, ensuring that all of our votes matter. I believe that the heavy-handed politics of the governor is a blatant attempt to deny voters in this state the opportunity to make fair, balanced, and competitive choices. I wish to address one other issue today, and some of you will know what I'm talking about. I know, Commissioner Sturts, you will know. I have heard that some people who heard a young lady speak in Sierra Vista two weeks ago, she was thirteen, think that someone must have written her speech for her. This is a false assumption, and it is an insult to her integrity and her intelligence. I know this young lady, and I know her mother. Caitlin, who is thirteen, asked if it would be proper for her to speak at the hearing. She wrote her own speech. Her mother is a teacher, and she reviewed it to make sure that it was appropriate. In a speech delivered with dignity and respect for the commission and the audience, she told everyone how she felt about the process and how the maps would affect her when she comes of voting age. Caitlin is the future of Arizona. She chose to speak her mind with words and thoughts that reflect her desire for a future where all Arizonans will be engaged in the governance of the state. I applaud her efforts and her commitment to our state. Now, I will admit that I'm not a hundred percent pleased with the maps that the commission has drawn. I firmly believe Douglas does not need to be mixed up with Green Valley. Although, like I said, I like to come here, but I don't come very often. It took me three hours to drive here this morning. But I would live with those maps if I thought that they represent the will of all of the voters of Arizona, and not to the dictates of those who want to muzzle and disenfranchise those who disagree with them. Thank you for coming to Green Valley, and thank you for letting me come to Green Valley. Thank you all for your service to our state.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Ms. Bickel, I have to tell you that the young lady that spoke was truly inspirational. And if you get the opportunity to livestream the Sierra Vista, and you can work your way to fast-forward, because there's a lot of boring speeches and Andrew talking again, or so that... But this young lady was really a joy to listen to. Next up is Robert Soto, followed by Donald Crete and William Sobek. And Michelle, how we doing? Okay?
Hello. My name is Robert V. Soto, like Victor. I use the middle initial V to distinguish me, you might say. What I'd like to say is mostly my utter disgust, especially at the national political scene, and the reason I tie it with what's being discussed here is more local, is because ultimately, people that represent us in, you know, the big place where they make money, come from the areas that are local. And since they print the money, it's very discouraging, disgusting, utterly disgusting to see all these Republican powerful people set us up for failure. I'll give you a personal story about my failure. The reason I do not speak too much and too well publicly is that when I took a test for my education at the U of A, even though I scored very high and very well in a particular subject, production management, the supposed counselor who was supposed to represent me, I think, as a citizen of this country and this state, mentioned to me that he would totally discourage me from following that curriculum, which would have led me into something, you know, which I had tested well, and, you know, I showed a lot of interest in. And he told me that because of my race, here comes race again, okay? I would not do well because people would not respect me, okay? I don't speak very well publicly, because I worked sixty hours a week, on the average, my entire life, my entire life, working life, about fifty-eight years. And I also went to night school. I probably have equivalent of two PhDs, mostly in the trades. In fact, talking about the trades, I know a particular man who was a teacher. His name is Andy Ochoa. He has a PhD, an actual PhD, in welding, okay? And the reason I bring this up is that we need workers, workers. The only way we can have workers is if we have a strong union movement. I was a union man, okay? That's why I worked so much, because I wanted to have a good retirement. And I have a pretty decent retirement. But what it amounts to is that we're always fighting this system that globalizes everything. That's why we have so much problem with the border. People are starving. And we have so much of a problem with people asking for money. I give money. I pull out my wallet and I give money as much as I can. But it's utterly disgusting to put up with the type of government that we have in DC that shut down everything because they don't want to print money, right? Because they have all their investments overseas. It gripes the hell out of me, okay? Is that clear? Okay? I also want to mention one particular item that'll call attention to what I'm talking about. There was a retired US senator from Texas that called the American people a bunch of whiners when he instituted, after the results, okay? I'm a person that pays very close attention to results. I was a maintenance mechanic, okay? So the results that he was bringing about was the fact that gasoline had gone up to almost five dollars a gallon, and people were parking their rigs. That was the start of the depression, I call it, okay? The reason it gripes me so much is that people are given so much power because of their lobbyists and their frontaling money and playing the casinos. Let these tribes play the casinos. They have rules, okay? But these jerks, they don't have rules. They break them. You can follow all the Republican governorships and Republican legislator-type mentality, and you can see the rules that they follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we've got, about to come out of bed. Next up, we've got Donald Crete, followed by William Sobek and Lori Jurz.
Good morning. I'm Donald Crete. I live in Sawarita. I've lived down here since I moved from Wisconsin in nineteen sixty, or ninety-nine-six. And I appreciate the willingness of the people on this commission to serve at no compensation in spite of all the bad publicity they may get from one person or another, the fact that some of us may bring up some things, or we will disagree with what they have done or what they may do. But I think it is good that, first, that the people of Arizona establish this commission, and secondly, that those people who serve are willing to serve because it is a thankless job at best. I also have a background into redistricting. I go back to the late nineteen-fifties, when I supported then our Attorney General John Reynolds, who filed the lawsuit against the way state legislative districts were done, and it was consolidated with a bunch of other lawsuits in front of the US Supreme Court, which led to the decision of one person, one vote. I go back that far. I also was a member of my city council back in Wisconsin after the nineteen-ninety census, when we did the redistricting, and a member of my county board back in Wisconsin after the two thousand, when we did the redistricting. And I know some of the bad issues and tough issues that have to be due because we were the ones that were empowered. I love it that it's done outside of that here in the state of Arizona, that the people have a chance to have the input. And part of my input is that it's hard to sometimes do it rightly, and the thing I complain about is, I've never been to Douglas, I've never been to Bisbee, and I don't think I miss either one. I live in Sawarita. I go to Green Valley all the time. In fact, here I am today. Also, I want you folks on the commission to look at one thing. Go to the Arizona Department of Transportation. They have plans in the next ten years to widen I-19, starting at I-10 to five lanes each way, then four, and then three to south of Green Valley. If there aren't going to be traffic there, if the people aren't going that direction, and it's not part of a community of interest, they wouldn't do it. They wouldn't do it. So I'm saying is, I have no community of interest. My community of interest is Sarita, Green Valley area, and at that place between the Santa Rita Mountains and the Sarita Mountains, where we have the water tables, where we have the problems with drugs and illegals crossing the border, the open-pit minings, we've got them on one side, they're underway coming to the other side of the valley. The whole Santa Cruz River Valley is part of a community of interest for that and all kinds of interests. And I would want us all to be in one legislative district, because we do have a community of interest, and I can't say it strongly enough. Take that under consideration when you make a Take that under consideration when you make your final decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And as a fellow cheeser, when my wife married me, I came, I'm from Wisconsin, and she said that she wasn't, she didn't realize that she was marrying into a cult. Next up is William Sobek, followed by Lori Jurs and Fletcher Strickler. William is not here. So Lori Jurs.
Good morning. My name is Lori Jurs. That's J-U-R-S. I've lived and worked in this community since 1984, which I think takes it to 27 years. Thank you very much for bringing the commission public meeting to Green Valley and for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I lived here in 2000 and voted enthusiastically for Prop 106. I did not realize at that time I would have to fight for it. But I'm willing, and it sounds like many people in this community are willing to fight for it as well. I've worn my Andy Nichols bolo tie, if any of you remember Dr. Andy Nichols, the first man who ever taught me how important redistricting was. And it sounded boring and dreadful at the time. Now I realize what he was talking about and the value of independence in doing that. You, the commission, are balancing potentially unbalanceable and competing interests and criteria. I see that. And I salute you for what you have done. And I'm willing to live with your results, as the lady from Douglas so eloquently said. I also support the voting rights safeguards and the priority given to the voting rights aspect. I'm willing to take a long view and a broad view to your product, and I hope that others can too. The current congressional districts and legislative districts are pretty goofy, if you think about it, and we've somehow lived with them. The only good thing about them now is that that's the way we've always done it. Well, things have changed a lot in the last 10 years, not just the population, but the makeup of the population and the complexity and the urgency of dealing with the problems we have. Our state has changed a lot in the last 10 years. It will change a lot in the next 10 years, and it makes a lot of sense that our districts need to change as well. This all said, my locals' perspective is the same as many others, that Green Valley and Saraweta are pretty much joined at the hip. They should be together, in my opinion, in legislative district two. The I-19 corridor is where I've lived and worked my whole career, Nogales to Tucson. Our governance, we aren't incorporated in Green Valley. I've lived through three of the, three or more of the incorporation-corporation fights. That makes us tied even more to Tucson in governance issues. Certainly, economic linkages are strong, the trucks, the traffic. In fact, Saraweta was incorporated in relationship to Green Valley. They are deeply, umbilically related in terms of their organization and governance. In closing, thank goodness for Proposition 106. Thank goodness for you. Yes, I wish there were much more competitive districts. Competition makes the suit better, and I believe it makes democracy better. We really should have one-third, 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 Democrat, Republican, Independent. All these districts should be one-third, one-third, one-third. Okay, that is a gold standard that we cannot possibly reach, but your draft maps have at least reached for that, for that goal. I hope you can find ways to make LD1 and LD2 both more competitive. Godspeed to you and the commissioners. I hope that the courts will quickly overturn the craven, undemocratic actions of the governor in the Senate and the proposal from both chambers that I might mention to start over from scratch. Does that make you want to slit your throat or not? I also want to read into the record that this includes the vote taken by our very own Senator Frank Antonori. So thank you for your work and Godspeed.
Thank you very much. Next up, we've got Fletcher Strickler, followed by Phil Friedland and Tom Pedriana.
Good morning, Commissioner Sturts. Good morning, people of Green Valley, Saraweta, Douglas, and wherever. Commissioner Sturts, I was interested to hear your long history in the Tucson-Green Valley area. I have lived here for 62 years, my entire life, and my next door neighbor in the early 1960s was Mr. Maxon, who built Green Valley. So I go back before this was even bulldozed. The actions of the state legislature and the governor are a result of Arizona being an uncompetitive state for probably its entire existence. When you have a district that is not competitive, either the entire state or your local district or your congressional district, how do you beat the incumbent? The only way to beat the incumbent is to be more to either that incumbent's right or that incumbent's left. And the parties move farther and farther and farther apart, and then they can never compromise and reach something that would serve the entire population of the state. We've heard that Arizona is one-third Republican, Independent, and Democrat. Ideally, every district, congressional or local, should have that balance. Why? Because then your primaries are allowed to perhaps pick a moderate or a liberal or a conservative. Next time, it might be an independent voter. The point is, it remains in flux and you get a more balanced representation of the people and your laws will become more compromising and all views will be settled. I live in LD 26, which is also unincorporated Pima County, on the north side of Tucson. And I am sensitive to all the comments that you guys have made about Saraweta and Green Valley being similar. I'm also a mathematician, and I know that to pick fair lines in a state that is so compact in its population centers and so diverse in its rural centers, that to get equally populated districts with as close as you can get representations of the political parties is almost mathematically impossible. The lines have to be somewhere. I live in 26. I buy my groceries in 28 and I go to the movie in 24, or whatever. That is my district of community interest. It's the state. It's the city. And Gabby Gifford's, her district, ends at Roger Road and Gohalva's begins on the other You've got to have a line somewhere. I don't want to comment on the local interest here. I do not live here. But just understand the difficulty that this commission has had to face in trying to come up with equal population, equal representation of parties as best as they can. And with that said, your legislative district map is woefully lacking. Even if the Democrats were to win every competitive district, as well as their own districts, there is no way, under the sun, that the Democrats could ever take control of the House. This should not happen in a one-third, one-third, one-third state. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, we've got Phil Friedland, followed by Tom Pedriana and Rick Ernst.
It's not easy going last, or next to last. My name is Philip Friedland, F-R-I-E-D-L-A-Y-N-D. Scary. I promised a couple of things. Number one, I will not be as eloquent as some of the other speakers. I will not have the beeper go off. I did not travel three hours to get here, and I did not give up a six-hour opera to be here. I just gave up some exercises. So I guess it was pretty easy for me. I have a quandary too. I live in Quail Creek, so I'm not sure if I live in Green Valley or Sararita, Rita. But let me stop my comments. As we all know, and we've heard many times, that November 2000, there was an overwhelming mandate for Proposition 106, that we get legislation out of making determination about our redistricting and we put it into an independent commission. The Democratic and Republican Parties appointed two people from each of their parties. You serve one of them, and I think has done an outstanding job. The next task, and I think your first task, was really to appoint a chairperson. You had a pool of five people to pick from, and unanimously you picked Colleen Mathis. And I think that was a good choice. Hopefully, you people, I think that was a good choice. For months, and I've attended some of the meetings, you've worked diligently, you've worked hard, you took abuse, you answered everybody's question, you had respect for everybody, and you seemed to do it with a sense of demeanor and respect for everybody's comments. And I'm sure I attended a couple, and some of them were just pretty outrageous, and I applaud you for that. And I thank you for the work that you've done. And I ask you, Commissioner, and I know this is a monologue, not a dialogue, to either smile, shake your head, or even wink at me. How do you feel about what's happened, the hard work that you people have put in? The fact that you worked together as a team to try to create something that was reasonable and seemingly not partisan? How do you feel about what's happened? I don't see a wink or a smile. Obviously, you can't answer me, but I thought I'd try. It should be mentioned that the National Congressional was approved four to one. So it seemed like it crossed party lines and it seemed pretty neat. The other three to two was obviously much closer. I'm not sure if it's public where the votes went. I didn't do my homework about that. But I think it's an example of the fact that you pretty much agreed on the maps that you came up with. Do I agree with the maps? No, and I don't think anybody completely would agree with the maps, but I agree with the effort that you people put in. We have a country that is filled with political hatred, where partisanship, politics is a rule rather than bipartisan workings. That almost seems unheard of. And I think it's paramount for our legislators to work together and to work for the people that elected them and not for their parties and not for their reelection. And I ask, and I may be just a dreamer, could Arizona, could it start here? Could it start with this redistricting committee, where you're going to stand apart from your parties, the Democrats and the Republicans, and do what is right for this state? Do what is right for the work that you've put in and forget that partisan politics? Could we, for once, be an example for the rest of this country and for the world that is watching very closely as to what's going on? And start doing something that is, that makes sense, that doesn't make Arizona any longer the laughingstock of this country? I call home and ask, my God, I did go. I don't know what to do now.
Wrap it up.
Let me read this real fast. So I think I said everything I, but what I do want to thank you, sir, is for the work that you've done. Please, please, work to get this commission back in order, and thanks so much for your service.
I appreciate that. And for the record, the, how the votes went down on both of the maps, because it is public record, it was, on the congressional maps, it was three, three for, the approval of the congressional maps, one against and one abstention. I voted against the congressional maps. On the legislative maps, it was four votes for the legislative maps and one vote against the legislative maps, and I voted against the legislative maps. So just to share that with you. Next up is Tom Pedriana, Rick Ernst, and Barbara Kane.
My name is Tom Pedriana, the traditional spelling, P-E-D-R-I-A-N-A. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before this independent redistricting commission. I first commend the voters of Arizona, who overwhelmingly approved this process in 2000. Second, I commend each of the commissioners for your diligence, your patience, your determination to deliver a fair outcome, and your fortitude in enduring the shrill partisanship this process was designed to avoid. Like almost everyone, I don't expect to be completely happy with the final outcome, whatever that is, but I believe in the process. I endorse the draft congressional map, but I would recommend a legislative map that creates more competitive districts. I would also recommend an outcome that preserves the natural and traditional community of interest between Green Valley and Saraweta in a single district. When I purchased a home in Quail Creek, I asked the Realtor, "Do I tell people that my address is in Saraweta or Green Valley?" Her response back then was, "It doesn't really matter. It's all really just one big community. The post office will know where to deliver your mail." And she turned out to be right, I believe. And I feel that as these communities are linked with central Tucson by the I-19 corridor, there exist economic and security reasons to also link them politically. The concept of fair competition seems totally logical to me. Voting in a district intentionally drawn to perpetuate a majority for one party is like playing a football game against a team with 15 players on the field. No matter how much you care, or how hard you work, or how well you play, you just don't have a fair chance to win. Further, I regard any interference in the work of this commission, any effort to dismantle it or undermine its independent nature, to be in clear defiance of the will of the majority of Arizona voters. I regard it as a reprehensible affront to me and the 56% of voters who approved Proposition 106. We did not approve it with the understanding that the party in power could simply nullify or alter the work of the commission if it chose, with no evidence to justify doing so. We did not intend that the party in power could decide whose votes are more important. I stand by the spirit and the letter of Proposition 106. I respect the work of this commission and demand that the governor and legislature also respect it and the product of its work. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Rick Ernst, followed by Barbara Kane and Elaine Lim.
My name is Rick Ernst, R-I-C-K-E-R-N-S-T. I've been a resident of Green Valley for the past nine years, and I must admit, I've talked disparagingly about Arizona politics. Because I did not have any reason to have any opinion on what the state gun is, nor whether we should have a Tea Party license plate. But I believe in the wisdom of crowds, and I'm very enthused and very inspired by what I hear today. This process of deciding the legislative districts and congressional districts is really important to our democracy. It's important for all of us to have fair and competitive districts. That's not to say that it's very difficult to draw those lines. It is very difficult. And I commend the commission and the work that they've done and the endless meetings and the endless speeches that they've listened to. I would like to make one recommendation, however. I would recommend that Green Valley, where I am a resident, be included in Legislative District Two. We have common concerns here in Green Valley and Saraweta. We share water. We share air quality. We share educational opportunities, health care, and of course, transportation, as well as law enforcement and many other issues. I would like to keep those communities of interest together so that we can elect a legislative senator and representative who is from our area and represents our interest, not from Douglas or Thatcher or any of those rural communities on the eastern part of the state. Thank you to the commission for their efforts. I appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Barbara Kane, Elaine Lim, and Bayard Brick.
Barbara Kane, C-A-I-N. And to my knowledge, I am not related to the Barbara Cain, C-A-I-N, and to my knowledge, I am not related to the Republican candidate.[601.62][601.62](Laughter) I want to thank the commission again for their work. This is the third redistricting meeting that I've attended, and I'm impressed with the quality of your efforts, and I'm appalled at what's happened to the chair, at the hands of our governor and Senate. I think they do not want us to have a voice in our own government. I believe that they want to outrule any competitive districts, and to draw them to protect their particular people. I hope that you will not let that happen. I came to Arizona in 1943 as a little girl, and it was quite a different state. However, then we had our allowed two senators and one congressperson. So, we have grown a lot in the ensuing years, and I had four children that added to the population. So, today, we have to look at, what are we looking for, for Arizona? And I believe we want to go back to the founding fathers, who were looking for independence and freedom of choice, and they wanted it to be independent and competitive in our pursuit of happiness. Right now, I think there's a lot of unhappy people in Arizona with the actions of our current leadership. So, the way we can go back is if you can draw us some maps that give us enough competitive districts that they can't carry everything. Right now, when I look at your own documentation on one of your charts, it shows that if the election in 2010 had taken place with these maps, the Republicans would still have controlled 19 of the 30 districts. We need to get it so that it's a little bit more balanced. I know it's a hard thing, and I'm not a math professor, but I know it's hard. Please try. We are the laughing stock. I can tell you. I've got relatives all over the globe, and they think we're really funny. So, I would like to be proud of our beautiful state, and the fact that we're going to turn things around this year. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.[759.69][759.69](Applause) Next up, we have Elaine Lim, followed by Bayard, or Bayard Brick, and Barbara Tellman.
Good morning. My name is Elaine Lim, L-I-M, from Tucson, Arizona. I'll keep my remarks brief. I want to first and foremost thank the commissioners for their many months of hard work. While I might not agree with every aspect of the maps as presented, I know that we have before us, what we have before us is much better than what our current legislature might have presented to us. The one issue I continue to have a problem with is that of the small number of competitive districts. A true democracy cannot exist without competitive districts. Without it, the complaints that we so often hear, that one's vote does not really count for too many, will indeed be true. As an aside, I would be proud to have Green Valley as part of LD 22, excuse me, LD Two, and I want to thank the commissioners for listening.
Thank you very much.[826.66][826.66](Applause) Bayard Brick. Barbara Tellman, followed by Emmeline Hanam, and Penny Pessell.
Barbara Tellman, T-E-L-L-M-A-N. I want to say how much I appreciate the process that you people have been going through for the past several months. I've attended quite a few of your hearings in southern Arizona, and I've watched you patiently listen for hours as people go on and on and on. And I really appreciate your willingness to listen to the public. I personally have expressed concerns in a number of areas. I talked about the role of prisoners and being counted as part of the population. I showed concern about splitting districts, such as splitting Cochise County into two, splitting Green Valley and Sarita, and splitting Morana and Oro Valley. I talked about the need for more competitive districts. I live in District Three, which is proposed to be about 62% Democratic. I'm a Democrat, and I asked you to put more Republicans in my district. I told you, a lot of what I liked and what I didn't like is did hundreds and hundreds of other people. What I didn't like was very clear, and what I really, really, really don't like is the fact that 21 Republican senators have decided that their opinions are more important than those of us who have been following this for a long time. And I really think that the idea that the governor had such a crisis on her hands, that she had to call a meeting, a special session of the legislature, with so little warning that none of us had any opportunity to tell them what we wanted them to vote on. And I think this is really a corruption of the democratic process, and I hope that when the courts get a hold of this appeal to the legislature's decision, that they will decide to return our independence to the independent redistricting commission. Thank you.
Thank you.[956.38][956.38](Applause) Next up is Emmeline Hanam, followed by Penny Pessell, and Mary Louise Connell. Is Emmeline still here?
She's speaking.
Okay.
She's not speaking.
Okay. Not speaking. Penny Pessell? She'll be followed by Mary Louise Connell, and by Bunny Wegeman.
Good morning. My name is Penny Pessell, P-E-N-N-Y, P-E-S-T-L-E. I have lived in Green Valley, five years exactly today. So, it seems fitting that I'm here this morning. And I actually almost did not come today. I was tired. I've been very busy this week. But I realized I had to be here for really, for several reasons. First of all, my concern, no, really, my rage at the actions of the governor really necessitated all of us being here this morning, and clearly, there's a real consensus on that issue. Secondly, this process, this process that Commissioner, you are involved in, and your colleagues are involved in, is so important to the future of this state. We really need to look at our politics differently, and to move to a different, a different place politically than we are today. And your diligence and dedication in pursuing this against fairly extreme odds is, I think, to be commended, and fulfills, begins to fulfill, the potential that the voters in 2000 expressed. So, it's important that we all be here. I, too, echo what has been said about LD District Two. I think it's very important that Green Valley, Sararita, and appropriate areas of Tucson be connected. We do have a tremendous commonality of interest, not only in terms of shopping and our daily activities, but those pressing issues that many of us think about often, the issues of water pollution, adequacy of water, particularly as we look out 10, or 20, or 30 years. I don't believe those folks who say we have 100 years' worth of water. I don't, I simply don't believe it. Pollution, air pollution, the mines, and the role of mining in our area, in this beautiful Santa Cruz Valley. And finally, the transportation commonalities. We have such a predominant corridor of transportation here, and it is very different from the corridor that is just on the other side of the mountains. So, I very much agree with that concern. I also agree that, in general, the competitiveness issue is one we really look at. And I was really impressed by that analysis, that 19 out of the current 30 districts would still be Republican, and incontrovertibly so. That is of concern. That is not competitiveness, although I suspect it's a move in the right direction. The question I want to leave you with, and what's really been concerning me over the last several years, is why would anyone come to do business in Arizona? Why would anyone do that? Why would a responsible businessperson, in a large or small company, make the decision to come here? Because we really are, in many ways, and have become, even in the five years I've been here, much more of a banana republic. I'm hearing that term all over the place. We really need to look at how we are governed, how we are legislated, because it really influences the future of this state economically and socially. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.[1185.83][1185.83](Applause) Mary Louise Connell, followed by Bunny Wegeman, and Amy Johnson.
Thank you. My name is Mary Lois Connell. That's okay. I've even been called Lois. I don't know where that came from, but it's Mary.
Don't call you late, right?
Lois is L-O-I-S Connell, C-O-N-N-E-L-L. I won't bore the commissioner or the folks that are still left here by repeating what has been said so eloquently and so effectively by prior speakers in terms of the connection between Sararita and Green Valley, and the entire I-19 corridor. I wish I could stand here and repeat everything they said, but it's been said enough. I just want to iterate that, starting with Mr. Still, going all the way back to the last speaker, this is, this is an issue for us. It's a serious issue. The competitiveness, I think Mr. Friedman has addressed that very effectively, in terms of that. And my understanding of the commission's mandate, you are obligated to follow federal law, and those are your top two priorities. You have to do, you have no choice in that. The other three mandates are there. My understanding is competitiveness is, once you've satisfied everything else, then you can think about competitiveness. The interesting thing is, in reading some of the comments made in the commissions, hearing the comments today, competitiveness is a top priority for us, for the citizens of this state. And when I look at all of the other issues, competitiveness is so tightly bound with every other issue, whether it's economic, or social, political. And I'll make my comment about the total inappropriateness of the action by Governor Jan Brewer, and the other 21 legislators in the Republican legislators in the Senate. This is an attack on the commission, and I want to commend you for continuing your work. I agree with others that all five of you, including Colleen Mathis, have been given a thankless job. You have been given a very difficult job. The gentleman who identified himself as a mathematician pointed out, there's not a situation which everybody's going to be happy. The idea is to get the best you can for the most people. The action by Jan Brewer, and the Republican-controlled legislator, is an attack on this independent commission, which is outrageous. It is an attack on due process. By removing Colleen Mathis without giving her due process is outrageous. This is an attack, not only on the commission and on Colleen Mathis personally, it is an attack on the democratic process, and I believe is an attack on democracy itself. And it is my hope, it is my hope, that all citizens of Arizona are going to take a look at this in the next election, regardless of party, and do what is ethically and morally right, and kick the bastards out. Thank you.[1383.32][1383.32](Cheers and applause)
Next up is Bunny Wegeman.
My legal name is Verna Wegeman, W-E-G-G-E-M-A-N, and I'm for putting Sararita and Green Valley together. I wanted to be one of the first ones to get up here today. I didn't think of it until halfway through, because I wanted to give a pep talk to the commission, as well as to all of us. The world is watching us. I was surprised to hear on Rachel Maddow's show what was going on. She's the one that told me, this is a national program, national news. She's the one that told me about Governor Brewer and what happened this week. And because she's watching, the nation is watching, and the world is watching us. She congratulated us on trying to get more democracy in Arizona. She also ridiculed the actions of the governor, and ridicules a powerful weapon. I thank you for doing what you're doing, and I want you to continue, and I just want to encourage everybody that's interested in democracy to keep up on what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1480.99][1480.99](Applause) Amy Johnson, and then we'll be followed with our last speaker, who is Pat Fleming.
Amy Johnson, A-M-Y, J-O-H, and S-O-N. I addressed you at one of the meetings in Tucson, and at that time, I said that, as a retired business analyst for Russell Investments, I knew you weren't not only going to make, not everyone happy, you were going to make anybody happy. It's a logical impossibility with all the criteria you had. And I spoke that time about competitiveness, because coming into the state, knowing it was so Republican, but then finding out that it was really split, you know, 30, 30, 30, between independents, Republicans, and Democrats, that I thought was very important. And I cited a lot of the arguments that other people have cited today also, about how you get good people who are willing to compromise, see the other side. And I got to say that I was wrong, because you did make somebody happy, and that's me. Not all the way, but pretty close, because even though we haven't picked up as many competitive districts, we have made progress. And clearly, people are so upset with that, and can't handle that, that it's resulted in what's been happening in the last week. But I'm almost happy. But the one thing I really want to encourage you to relook at is Sararita and Green Valley. I retired here about 14 months ago. When I was retiring, because I had no minor children, I was in an area where I didn't have a lot of family, I could go anywhere in the entire world. I considered Chicago, where I grew up. I considered the northeast, where supposedly I would be more comfortable in my lifestyle. I considered the southeast. I considered Kenya, and I considered France. And I chose the I-19 corridor south of Tucson. I have been volunteering once a month at Crossroads Mission in Nogales. My favorite store is Costco. Home Depot was second, and that's where I do a lot of my shopping, in Tucson. I have my health care from the Indian Health Service in San Javier. I have family in Toubac. And I have, I attend the Methodist Church in Green Valley. I go to the dog park every morning.[1647.11][1647.11](Laughter) It's maybe a little scruffier than usual, because I came right from the dog park in Sararita. And I haven't said where I live. I live in Sararita. I did not know that until we wrote up the escrow agreement on my property. I thought it was moving to Green Valley. It's one place, it's one group of people, and clearly, the issues that we have are all the same. And to take us apart would actually, as I understand it, even make the districts a little less competitive by putting Green Valley more into the people that, the district that they would more normally vote with. And so, both districts become a little less competitive by splitting us up that way. So, because we really are not similar, we really are the same. You can't tell one from the other. I really encourage you to make that one slight adjustment to the great work you've had, and also to hang tough with the people who are saying, no, your stuff is worthless. And whether you voted for or against, you all participated heavily. You all had your voices heard. You all represented the people that you were hearing. And I really thank you for what you've done, and I urge you to hang tough. Thank you.
Thank you.[1728.11][1728.11](Applause) And our final speaker is Pat Fleming.
Thank you, Commissioner Sturts. It's nice to see you again. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for hanging tough, and for me being the last one here today. I usually come prepared with a few pages of notes that I would like to share with people. Today, I didn't. Been a little bit busy. But I made the trip from Cochise County. Pat Fleming, F-L-E-M-I-N-G. Two hours, not quite what Susan Bickel has done. Having been to as many hearings in southern Arizona as I have, and Commissioner, with what you've been hearing, I think by the vote of the people who've been at these meetings, you've got your solution to southern Arizona legislative districts, at least. I live currently in District, Legislative District 25. Most of the people here are in Legislative District 30, as it is right now. Considering the Legislative District One, and being from Cochise County, where you heard from so many people there, saying, bring back into our county the communities of Douglas, Nakal, Bisbee, part of Palominas, and part of Hereford. Naco, Bisbee, part of Palominas, and part of Hereford, I think you have a pretty good gist of what's happening there. The way Legislative District Two is right now, that has been obviously packed, giving Democrats a twenty-six-point advantage while taking away a small section of registered Democrats from those communities I just mentioned. No solution there in making LD, the proposed LD Two, a little more competitive. It certainly doesn't solve the problem of making LD One any more competitive, but I believe it is the will of the people of those communities. Hearing what people here have said about the I-19 corridor is not in any kind of controversy to what I believe, although I, I would certainly love for the community of, the communities of Sarita and Green Valley to be in the same district with me. I think that would be just fine. But I wanted to let you know that I attended the Cochise County Elections Department review of the maps, and I know it's tough to get into that kind of detail, but I just want to make sure that you know, and the commissioners who are watching, the legislative and congressional lines that are hitting a section of Cochise County that delineates LD One from LD Two have some really unusual diversions. And what, watching that really gave me another insight into how complicated your jobs have had to be in finding and devising some of those legislative and congressional lines. So it's certainly by no means an easy task, so I add my appreciation for what you've all been doing. But as I've spoken before about packing, LD Two has obviously been packed, and it's going to be certainly reviewed by Department of Justice, so I think some of these suggestions need to be well, well-considered. But I also want to talk about additional competitiveness, but I think that what I don't hear enough of, and I would like to, and I guess this is the last meeting, is to remind people that the state legislature needs to stay out of the business of drawing the lines. It hasn't worked before. You look at what happened to LD Three, LD Thirty, and there's certainly no continuity and can, well, I forgot what the other word is. The, the commission has already honored the voter's decision that they made in 2000 by putting this process to be representative. But I have to add here as the last speaker, how to, to put it politely, I'm very dismayed at what the majority members of the senate and the governor of Arizona have done during this past week. But I have to add a little more emphasis there to being actually disgusted because of the bullying that some of the congressional members have done to apparently turn the state representatives, the states, well, representatives and senators into that decision to make, to make that removal of Chairwoman Mathis. I thank you all. Hearing, going to all these different meetings has certainly been an education for me, and I appreciate all the input and the time that you all have put in. Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I'll just give you a couple of quick closing remarks. First of all, thank you all for showing up on a Saturday morning and taking the time out of your lives to, to give us your thoughts. The, the reason that this is such a challenge is because you have heard, as Andrew had outlined, their criteria, their constitutional criteria, and Proposition 106 is a fairly complete, and yet it's a fairly complex, and it's a, it's almost counterintuitive. As a mathematician, I understand the, the idea about that, once you achieve the voter's rights criteria, you take out, when you look at statistically, a large percentage of the voting age Hispanic population is registered as Democrat. You take out a large population of those, and then you put, then you place those to meet the Voters Rights Act. And then you layer on to the concept of competitiveness, and we've got mountain ranges and rural communities and highway corridors, and we really only have two very large suburban areas in the state, and we've got a piece of geography that is mind-boggling in size. So in trying to piece all this together, how it ends up looking after the fact can end up looking a little bizarre. Now, I was in Cochise County in our first tour. I was in Yuma County the first tour. I've been, I've been all, I've been literally in almost all corners of the state except for the upper northeast corners in the public hearings. And I, I'm a tremendous believer that once you develop your communities of interest and understand geography, transportation corridors, et cetera, the natural outpouring of that is going to be the adjustments to competitiveness. I think that's what the crafters of Proposition 106 gave to us to do, and that if you push competitiveness to the top, you end up creating these wholly just bizarre-looking maps where you're grabbing pockets of, of population and then ignoring the ideas of communities of interest and geography, et cetera. This is a marriage of, I'd explained this to, when we had our very first hearing, the idea of a stew, I actually called it a jambalaya, because there's going to be so much spice in the process of getting there. So as, again, this week has been a very difficult and challenging one, I want you to keep all of us and all the commissioners in your thoughts and your prayers as you continue on the week, as there is a litany of other experiences that are going to be taking place this upcoming week. As the commission is continuing to move forward, there was a process that was set forward both in the, in the Constitution, in Proposition 106 for remedy, and that, that is, that is one direction that's taking place right now, where the appellate court appointment board is going to be meeting on Monday to select a new slate of independents. Simultaneously, there is the commission itself has filed litigation against the state for the actions that were taken against Commissioner, against Chairman Mathis. So this will shake itself out. There's two different processes, and one of those is going to be the one that, that follows. The, the good news about it is that we're a land of laws, and those are the laws that we follow, and I'm glad and pleased and proud to be part of this commission, as challenging and interesting as it has been so far. So thank you. Enjoy the rest of your Saturday.